Education is what brought my dad from Nigeria. Education is what also helped my mom come out of poverty. Everything around education has been an open door. And so that's really what I'm passionate about is making sure that every child is aware of the incredible opportunity they have by receiving an education. So anything that I can do to facilitate that excitement and confidence. I mean, the door is also as open for me are just incredible. And so I just, I want everyone to have that opportunity.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing. I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today. We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
This is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest is Shayla Owaduni, who is running for Minneapolis School Board at Large, which means every voter in the city will have her on their ballot. Welcome to the Wedge Live podcast.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for saying my last name correctly. That was impressive.
I prepped. I watched a school board forum.
Nice.
And I think I heard you introduce yourself, so I was sure I wasn't hearing a moderator mispronounce it.
I love it. I love it.
I put a lot of effort into these four school board candidate episodes that we're doing.
I feel honored, honestly. It's funny, sometimes people will think if they don't see me, they'll try to capitalize the D on my name, and I've been asked like, oh, are you Irish? And then they see me, and I'm like, ah, gotcha.
There's no apostrophe after the O.
Right, there is, there is none.
So I was reading the Minne-- I've been reading the Minneapolis Schools Voices interviews, which I highly recommend. They're kind of, they're long, which is good, because it's extensively in the candidates' own words. And you're telling a lot of anecdotes about how you volunteered in the schools. And I was, I thought those were really interesting. Can you talk about like, what, how you got involved with that? Like, why would you even start doing that? And then like, what it is you're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's funny, because I was, I said, when I have kids, you know, that's when I'll get plugged into the school system. And to make a very long story short, I feel like it was, it was a journey of searching for purpose in that March of 2023, well, actually it was February, my sister and I went on vacation for her 35th birthday to be, you know, Miami girls. And the day after her birthday, she actually had a massive stroke while we're on vacation, till she was unresponsive. They said that if she did make it out, you know, she would not know how to walk, talk, recognize us, anything. And it made me realize how short and fleeting life is. And it made me question, like, after that whole process, we were in Miami from February until April. She's fully recovered today. She doesn't even remember what happened. But when we came home, I started to ask myself, like, what am I doing to give back? And, and if, if today is my last day, like, what, what did I contribute to society? And, and to make tomorrow better for someone else? And as it would have it, when on her table, she had a flyer for, and it was just talking about, you know, statistics in Minneapolis Public Schools, and how important early learning is, and that Early Learning Corps was recruiting for volunteer interventionists. And so I said, hey, this, this sound like this must be the thing I'm supposed to do. And so I started volunteering at Pillsbury. And what an experience to, when you're around children, right? It makes you put any, any other things you have going on aside and put so much in perspective. And seeing these children that I was working with from the beginning of the year, who were like, I don't want to, you know, what is an intervention? Or I don't want to do this till by the end of the year, my children calling themselves math masters, and their parents were excited. And just seeing how much is possible from just an everyday community member really is what made me dig into the district.
And so what kinds of things are you doing with the kids when you're volunteering?
Yes, I'm focused on reading and math. And so that is what I, like, my, my core responsibility. But it's everything from sitting with them in breakfast and asking them what's going on at home, to going out to recess with them, to also when they have their interactive playtime, that's when I will do reading and math. So anything from reading stories to them, vocabulary, you know, phonics and picture naming to math games. And technically, it's all, right, interventions or assessments. But they, they don't know the difference, because I call them either math games or reading games or math masters. So I actually end up spending time with all of the students, and also just supporting the teacher and then the assistant teacher as well.
One of the stories you told, I think it was about like, parents who didn't really have time to read to their kids. And you did this thing with a QR code where, it sounded like very industrious for a volunteer to be coming up with QR codes that I assume link to a video, and then it's you reading to the kids.
Yes, it is. So it's funny, I got the, I got the idea from, so it's like, I can't take full credit, but like, throwback to the 90s, my mom worked night shift. So she wasn't able to do the bedtime stories or anything. And she recorded herself on a tape recorder, reading bedtime stories to us. And honestly, till this day, like, that's, I thoroughly enjoy reading, because I associated that with my mom and like, you know, listening to her before I would go to bed. And so as I was talking with main teacher, Ms. Chloe, and she was saying, oh, a lot of the parents work night shift, or just the different day-to-day in their life, it wasn't like they had the set, you know, a set time to read. And I was like, well, hey, neither did my mom. So what I did is, we had the extra books, and, you know, I'm like, I love tech, that's my background. And so I just recorded myself on my iPhone, reading the stories, and then, you know, printed out little QR code stickers, because every child, even four-year-olds, love to use a cellphone. And so I put it in there, and then, and I told myself, like, if maybe 10 students over the summer would read these books, like, that would be a success. And before you knew it, my mom was like, hey, have you checked your YouTube videos lately? And I was like, uh, no, like, those are in like, the deep depths. And they had over 90,000 views, and then I checked, yes, 90,000, like, I did, I could not.
Monetize that. Monetize that YouTube channel.
I need to take some tips, because no, I really need to. And then I had emails from parents, like, as far as Egypt, I'm not even kidding you, being like, Samantha would love for you to read XYZ book. And so they have these recommendations, like, so parents are giving recommendations. And it's so funny, because the kids that I volunteer with, they're like, what, you know, Ms. Shayla's an everyday person, but when they saw those YouTube videos, they were like, Ms. Shayla, how did you get famous?
90,000 is impressive. I thought you were gonna say a couple hundred, and you're like, wow, all these students are listening. Apparently, it's gone global.
Yes, yes. So I was like, okay, now, I'm like, I need, I need to make more videos and maybe like, up my, up my tech use.
This is a terror. So here's a down note. This is a terrible time for you to be running for school board. And it's low pay. I always say it's low pay, it's high stakes. People will be mad at you for one reason or another if you win. I don't know what the upside is. So, so the budget, the budget's a huge deal. Everyone's concerned about it. I think they used 55 million, correct me if I'm wrong, of one-time funds to help close this year's budget gap of 90 million. The $20 million property tax levy thing to increase funding the school, that's also on the ballot. So people are very focused on the budget. But when I listen to candidates campaigning, as I prepared for this episode, there's a lot of talk about, and it makes sense, we need to do more, we need to attract families back, we need to increase enrollment. Like, how do you do more while having to cut back? You'd think if you have to cut back, you have to do less. How are you campaigning and not lying to people about how you're gonna do the good stuff and have money to pay for it?
Yeah, and that's like, I, you know, I am a very positive for, I can find the positive in anything, but I'm also a realist. And so that is, I feel like it's a two-pronged approach, right? It's like, looking at what are revenue generating activities we can do? And then also, what are, as we look at our expenses, where can we trim the fat? And so, and obviously, it's like, you know, you can say that the hog is real lean, but I would like to take a look. Right now, they do what they call priority-based budgeting. And I would like to move even a step further and look at zero-based budgeting. And essentially, what that is, is just what it sounds like, you know, start at zero, and line by line, really go through all of the expenses. And particularly, when you think of, obviously, there are expenses that are, you know, contractually obligated. But then, as we look at either administrative expenses, when you start to go through the, the exercise of zero-based budgeting, you can quickly see that versus with priority-based, where contracts are just rolled over, year over year, it's every year you have to look at individually. And I feel that being able to, to start that, have that be a starting place to recognize, okay, is there something, is there a contract? Or is there something that has been rolling over that could maybe wait two years? Could it wait five years? But I would really love to see projections as far as, you know, what does a two-year projection look like? What is a three-year? What is a five-year? And on the revenue generating side, like, you mentioned the, the tax levy as a $20 million, you know, bucket that wouldn't make us dip out of the general fund. But I would even like to see as far as, what would corporate sponsorships look like? If we, as we think of companies, whether it's Target, United Health Group, Best Buy, what does it look like for them to be able to partner and, and support things like our, our tech? Or support, you know, additional classroom resources? And then also, just looking at different, different ways that I've seen done, as I look at other school districts, now it's in Minnesota, but when we look at similar demographics, similar, similar experiences, how can we be able to, instead of recreating the wheel? We're, this isn't new across the US. So where, what are other districts that are similar to us, that have been in this predicament? And how did they get out of it? That's what, what my focus is, is to borrow and, and adjust for Minneapolis.
Are school closures inevitable? Because when I read, I was reading an article that quoted both the superintendent and the board chair, Colin Beechy, and the comments from the two of them sat, made it sound to me as though school closures are inevitable. So I'm wondering if that's how you see it.
Yeah, I think the biggest question I have is, if they are inevitable based on what projections? Because I'd say first, I would like us to see, I would like to see us exhaust every other aspect of reviewing the budget before we point to school closures. Because while it might be inevitable, I would like to see, again, like, okay, if, if one school closed, what does that look like? How much money is saved? And then on the flip, how many families would be leaving the district as a result of that? What would that do to class size from what district? You know, there, there's so many, I feel like, aspects of this that it's hard to have a transparent conversation about it without having that information readily available, which I have not seen. I just, I've heard the conversation kind of for a few years now is what it sounds like. But I would like to see an actual, either model or projection of, you know, how many schools are, how many schools are they thinking? How much money is saved? There, there's just a lot of variables in the air on the conversation. Which kind of, you know, it's like, it, it makes it like the mystic spooky people getting anxious, because there's, there's nothing solid that we're grasping on that conversation.
Do you have any big ideas? Like, it sounded to me, reading the interview you did, you, you might have some big ideas for what you want to do if you're elected. Can you like, can you think of some problems you want to fix? And what would you do?
Hmm, problems I'd like to fix. One is, which I feel like drives my conversations around the budget or community engagement, or really anything, is a focus on our students in the, specific to the achievement gap, and also graduation rates. So right now, and this was, it really opened my eyes, because, you know, we hear that Minnesota is like a top place to live in America. We hear all these wonderful stats. And then I read a research study by UCLA that said Minneapolis is in the bottom five in the nation for graduation rates for black males. And so with life expectancy tied to graduation rates and in life outcomes, then that begs the question for me of, I've heard the conversation, right? It's, it's brought up quite often around assessments or, you know, planning. But I would like to switch more towards, what are our solutions for this? And what are we going to do to A, get these children excited about coming to school? Because that is one of the significant parts is truancy. But then also, what are we doing to create, regardless of if they're going to college or not, a pathway that is successful? So I would like to look into authentic assessments is something that I've started to research and what I've been, what I started with in early learning class. It's a term, I didn't know it was a term. Initially, I was just like, doing, for example, with the students, I had to do, like, they have to learn how to count. And initially, the students would be like, oh, Ms. Shayla, this is boring. Or like, you know, they, they'd be looking around, not interested, until then I started to genuinely ask the children, like, what do you want to be when you grow up? And, you know, one student said, ice spice. And I was like, well, I think you want to be her manager. But hey, you know, like, why do you want to do that? And she was like, well, she wears nice outfits and was like, going on about it and getting excited. And I was like, well, if you wanted, if you want those sparkly outfits, you need money. And you need to know how to count your money, so no one can take your money. And then it was like, you know, the kids were kind of intrigued, like, okay, like, tell me more. So I got some fake, you know, money off of Amazon and some wallets. And my mom made them little, put little cricket, used her cricket to make, to put their names on it. And these children were quickly learning how to count. They were excited. Again, they were calling themselves math masters. They were, then they were telling their parents that they had to get to school, because it was, you know, school store day, and they had to spend their money. And, and so I feel that I would really like to look at, how are we assessing our children in a way that is relevant to real-life examples and helps them, and helps them develop? Because as someone who gives these assessments, honestly, I've been frustrated. Like, for example, they do, children, like, four and five-year-olds do picture naming. And, and you know, one of them, it's a, can you remember the name? Like that purple, the purple vegetable, the purple vegetable emoji? Anyway, like, so of course, I show the kids, and they're like, it's a vegetable. No, that's the wrong answer. One of the right answers is like an aubergine or something. I'm like, who, who is gonna know that? Or it's like a kid where, you know, he's making like, an arm like this. And they're like, oh, he's strong. You're not wrong, but the answer is elbow. You know, so it's just like, I would really like to take a look at how, while assessments are incredibly valuable in, in assessing where our students are, but I would really like to take a deeper dive on the, how we're doing our assessments? And what is the, is the data telling the full story? So that's one aspect that I really would like to look at as we, as we look at how we are supporting our children and telling that story.
There was a flare-up. So they had a school board forum where the at-large candidates and the district six-four candidates, who appeared not to like each other at all, I've noticed, were all on stage together. And one of the, the flare-up points was like standardized tests, I think. And one candidate, Greta Callahan, says, parents should not have their kids take standardized tests. And the other candidate, Laura, is like, well, we have to have some way to, to measure achievement. Like, do, can you weigh in on that battle? Do you have a position there? Or would you like to stay far away from that debate?
Yeah, I, I like to say, I like to stay out of debates. I will say, as someone who is doing interventions in the classroom, and I have had parents opt out, I feel that you have, the, the most success that I've had with students is when we're able to at least have some basis of measurement. I'm not saying the system in place, as I just said, it's not perfect. But you have to have some type of North Star to, to measure how, how are we doing? And so, for example, the students who have, who their parents have opt out, A, they didn't understand what the, what the paperwork that was sent home, because it's like a double negative type of thing. Like, you know, if you don't send it back, that means your kid's in. If you send it back, that means, you know, they're not being assessed. And so I feel like it is being able to, instead of making parents, there's already transparency issues. Parents already don't have a lot of trust. So I feel that encouraging them to opt out is not the method that I would use. Like I said, and this is coming from someone as an interventionist that uses that data to see like, oh, you know, is, is little Georgina, okay, la, two months ago, she couldn't count to three. Now she's counting to eight. And I, and I can see that trajectory versus just like a visual, because when there's, you know, there's the main teacher that they have, there's me as a volunteer. So they're getting a lot of different interactions. So we need some constant to be able to measure where they're starting from. So I think that, again, it is, it's not just a, it's not perfect the way we have it, but I do feel like there has to be some, some baseline to measure.
And I apologize to Greta Callahan for not asking the standardized test question, because I already talked to her, and I'm remembering about it now, and so she won't have a chance. I apologize, audience, and to Greta for not giving her that chance. How do you attract families back? That's another big theme I'm hearing from candidates. So one way to address the budget crisis is, you gotta cut some things. Another way is, you get more money from the state if you could attract these families back who have gone, gone elsewhere. So do you have ideas to make Minneapolis Public Schools more attractive?
Yeah, right, talking about the ultimate PR strategy, right? But I feel that the way to attract them back is to show that you have listened, and that what are you doing about, what are you doing to address why they left? Right, so like, in, when I was in internal audit, we had to do such like remediation plans. So, right, we would, we would do the whole assessment, so like, these are the problems. And then you had to work with that specific group to say, what are you going to do to remediate these issues? There were, there is, you know, a name tied to it, there's an action item tied to it, and there is a date tied to it. So that at least when we do our follow-up, we can say, hey, you said you were going to do this, what's the status? So for these families who have left, I feel like by being able to show them that this was your concern, and this is the reason you took your student out of the district, this is what we are, we are working on, even I've noticed, if you at least just say like, I am working on it, and can pinpoint what you're actually doing to work on that specific issue, you will get a lot more compassion and understanding than just blatantly, essentially blatantly, like, listening to someone, making them feel heard, and then sending them on their way, and, you know, shutting that chapter of the book. So I feel that it really is going to have to be proving more than just with words, but actually with act, like, written action of what we're doing.
Do you have a sense whether it's more of a problem of, well, I want a school that offers this very special thing that I want for my kid, whether it's like a language or some kind of music program? Or is it just a general sense on families and parents' part that like, this is not a good school, and I don't want, I don't want my child going there? Is it like a generalized sense of the school is just insufficient? Or are there special things they want? Like, do you have a sense of what the bigger problem is?
Yeah, honestly, from, I've talked to families all over, and it really is, it's general things. And one of the main things is feeling heard, like, hey, I addressed, you know, my, I, my child, I didn't feel safe with them, you know, a situation, and then, you know, like, I brought it to the board, or I brought it to the school. And, you know, I was told like, oh, we will take care of it. And then either the problem persisted, or there was, or they, they were told that they'd be followed up with, and then they weren't. Right, so they said like, okay, that happened so many times. Before then, you know, there's, there's another option for them. And parents are always going to do what they feel is best for the outcomes of their child. So I feel like it, it really hasn't been anything specific, like, you not offering French to my, you know, seven-year-old. No, it's very much so just, did I feel that my child would have the best outcomes and success in this district? Or could they do better elsewhere? And, and so that's really, it was, it's more of like, the difficult decision of, hey, I, I gave it, I gave it a go. So I feel that a lot of it can be just, really, as these families leave, some was an exit interview? What are, what are the, what are the key, what are the top four reasons, right? And that is the, that is the PR push that we are going to, to leverage to be like, hey, we, not only do we hear you, but this is what we're doing about it. I think that would allow more people to be like, okay, they, they actually are taking this seriously, and I'm, I'm gonna be willing to give it a chance. But at least to show, you know, show that something, something is being done about those concerns, and that they're actually being tracked and closed out.
One observation you made in the Minneapolis Schools Voices interview that I found interesting was that, and it was about like, what, what are people in different parts of the cities concerned about? And you observed that Southwest is just very into the budget, very, very into school closures. Is it that they're like, they want you to close schools? Or they just want to know what your position is on it in Southwest?
I think it's actually, it's a little bit of both. And so that's what I feel like, when it comes to the conversation of closures, having data would be a lot easier to make it, make it more obvious. It sounds like, and again, I'm not in Southwest, but it sounds like there are some schools that are very empty. Or like, there's two schools that are nearby each other, and there are a lot of parents that I've talked with want those two combined. And so somewhat as me outside looking in, I would like to see, okay, what, what would it, what does it look like for those two schools to come together? What does that do to class sizes? How much money does that save? What happens to the other building? Is that something we're gonna lease out? Are we gonna sell it? What happens to the staff? So I, like, I'm hearing these things, but then I have, I have nothing concrete to, to go on with that. But I feel like more than any other district, I've heard that repeatedly from parents about two schools that are nearby each other that a lot of families have concerns about.
And they're just like, all watching school board meetings. It's the only part of the city that has the free time to watch school board meetings, I think.
Yeah, I said, wow, live tweeting, you know?
Yes, every, every voter in Southwest has live tweeted a school board meeting at least once, I think.
Maybe it's the right passage. I said, this is the most, the eye-opening thing, right? Because I considered myself pretty, like, I considered myself engaged. And then I, I've gotten into this world of school, school board, and it is a totally different world. It is very real, but it is, is something that I did not realize the depth of until I, I got in here.
It's where you make friends and enemies for life, I think, schools politics.
Yeah, I guess what it's like, people's babies, right? It's like, you know, you know, it's like, ew.
It's what, I've taken my life into my own hands by even having these episodes where I have to ask questions. People, people are gonna be so mad at me for the questions I didn't ask, let alone how they're gonna feel about you for the answers you give. They'll be like, why didn't you ask this?
Oh, I know, I know. I had someone, no lie, last night, because, you know, they, they have you give out your cellphone number and everything. And someone texted me last night, it was like, after eight, and they wanted to have a conversation. And then when I was not able to have a conversation, they're like, well, you must not care about the schools. And it's like, I'm sorry, on, on Thursdays, on Wednesdays, I have Spanish class. You know what I mean? So it's just, but I, I realized the urgency and all of it. But also, I, I don't take myself too seriously. Like I said, I was in, I was in finance, but I was also a very peaceful plant lady before all of this, so.
Are you not doing the plants anymore?
I am. So that's what I, I took, I went from, you know, the finance world to, as you like, into plant design and, and writing. And so, so yeah, and especially like I said, after my sister's stroke, not too much bothers me, I'm gonna be honest. So I'm, I'm pretty, obviously, like, what, things that are important to me, I value, but I don't take myself too seriously.
Let's do reader questions. I asked for questions on social media, and people have submitted those questions. How are you gonna deal with all the many passionate stakeholders on all sides? Students, parents, teachers, teachers' unions, administrators? How do we know you're gonna be able to do that?
Because I am a level-headed person that I genuinely enjoy listening to opinions and all sides of an issue. And I had to be that way as an internal auditor and doing investigations. It's like, you assume nothing, you take in all of the information, and then I say like, this is what I'm hearing, I, I repeat it back out. And then, and then without any, take all the emotion out of it, what are the facts? And what is the outcomes? That's why I really like amalgamating information and input, because it becomes a lot clearer to make decisions that are based on the facts of the situation versus just, you know, what does Shayla want? And so that's really my goal, is to be in the best interest of our, our students, not just for today, but five years from now, 10 years from now.
Would you vote for the CDD, the Comprehensive District Design, today?
Ooh, that's a good question. So with the CDD, again, this is something that I hear with my friends in a year, I'm like, CDD. So it's only, there are a lot of challenges with the CDD. I see that the basis, right, was rooted in equity and, and widening, being able to have just an even playing field. But then I also hear families saying, now the school, their, their ride to school is longer, they're passing their neighborhood school, or how many families left the district as a result of the CDD? And so if anything, I would have, I think I would have gone about taking in community input a lot deeper. I mean, for example, the emails that I receive, even during this campaign, the tone of emails I receive from people in my inbox versus when I'm going to churches, I'm, I'm going to community centers, I'm going where parents are, it's really a night and day as far as opinion. And so if you only take in a small subset of opinions to make your decision, I feel that it can feel very loud that this is what everybody wants. But as you, you know, take a step into other areas, you can see that the, the tone may be different. So I would So I would have perhaps taken a more pragmatic approach to taking in more insight and moving a little slower before making.
We've got, uh, two related questions about, uh, kids' mental health as it relates to both smartphones and lack of self-reliance and independence. So the first question about smartphones, what should the district's policy be with regard to reducing the influence of smartphones?
Yes, I mean, as someone who grew up without them in the classroom, um, I feel that I would like to see us get back to, um, re, with removing that, that piece of technology. Uh, because it's interesting, even with the four and five-year-olds, when we put on a, something on the screen, when I tell you it's like zombie mode versus it, it, from the first day, we had to almost ease them into, we're gonna pick up a book and focus on these words and not have so much stimulation, um, right, from these external, um, devices. And so I think that while smartphones have their value, uh, from a learning perspective, I feel that that is a tool, um, that could be turned down.
Yes, definitely. It's not, it's not good for me and it certainly isn't good for a child. Uh, I'm addicted to my phone, how about you?
Yes, they even said like early, they said, actually interesting, like millennials onwards, um, it, they said it's causing an increase, um, can cause an increase in early onset Alzheimer's because our brain is so intelligent that it knows it does not have to work as hard as it used to. And I think about it even for directions, like to go from, you know, Minneapolis to Eden Prairie, like my parents used to print out, you know, like MapQuest or they would know, you know, north, south. And me, I'm like pulling out my, my phone to go to Chick-fil-A, you know? And so I'm like, okay, it really is something to be said about training your brain, um, to think for itself.
And on transportation, the idea of, so here I'll read it. With growing concerns about children's lack of independence and wellbeing, how would you work to create safe routes for walking and biking to school? Encouraging students to travel independently while reducing the heavy car traffic and chaotic parent drop-off?
Hmm, that's a good question. I feel that I would engage specific to, right, community, community by community, school by school. Um, what are, what are proven routes? Uh, what does it look like to have either, um, walkers or have, um, you know, some type of groups by neighborhood that would walk together? I think it would really be up to, um, engaging parents and caregivers that are interested in walking or that see that that would be beneficial, um, within their school. Cause I do know families who do prefer to drive their kids, um, for a myriad of reasons. And so it is understanding, um, who wants it, how many students? And then working, um, with those, whether it is individually by, um, you know, like the parent committees at schools or, um, those who, uh, desire to have it. Because I think it is definitely valuable to walk. Uh, but I think it is ensuring that, you know, those who don't want to do it, they, they don't have to. Um, and those that, that want to have that option.
Okay, here's a question about disabled students. Uh, how do you envision the school district and individual schools becoming more inclusive for disabled students? My son is autistic and he is supposed to be in the least restrictive environment per federal policy and law, which we can think of as being the most normalized and mainstreamed environment for his classes and school experience. But often, even with the most well-intentioned teachers and staff, his experience has been separate from the vast majority of his similar age peers, even when in the same school, sometimes in the same classroom. This became and becomes especially glaring once a disabled student enters high school. What are your thoughts on having an inclusive school experience for everyone compared to the current system that seems to put students into narrowed lanes? For example, college prep, hope and pray they graduate, disabled, et cetera.
Yeah, I feel that, at least what I've seen in, in the classroom that I volunteer in, uh, there is a significant resourcing issue. Uh, because we do have students, uh, with varying special needs in, in my class. And, uh, some days there is, you know, an additional support for 10 minutes. Sometimes it is, it's longer, it all, right, it all depends on, um, what their, uh, assignment or schedule is for that day. Um, but I think that it really is, and listening to, um, parents like this who, who are suggesting this, and then also being able to say, what does it look like? What is the, what is the implementation to provide or remediate what they're asking for? Does it look, it doesn't mean that they're asking for an additional, um, support resource in the classroom, um, that would be able to keep them, um, learning and, and progressing, um, with their peers? Uh, what is it? Because it's more than just, um, looking at it and saying like, oh, bummer. You know, it's like, hey, look, what, what are we going to do? What does that look like? And, and then how does the school, um, help respond to that need? Um, but like I said, right now, at least from what I'm seeing is, a lot of it is a lack of resourcing. Um, and that's what, that seems to be, um, kind of repetitive, um, all around is, um, the need for additional support.
So, uh, I'm all out of questions, all out of reader questions. So we're getting close to the end, but it occurs to me, so you started or in finance and audit? Am I correct?
Yeah.
And you transitioned to plants, like you're an interior stylist, uh, related to plants. And so I imagine there must be an amazing story for why you, uh, made that transition? Is there?
Yeah, well, I mean, I can say it, supportive parents. Um, well, so that's what my, well, my dad wanted me to be. I'm Nigerian, so it was like doctor, lawyer, engineer, accounting was Plan D. So I, being the rebel I am, chose Plan D, um, with the thought that I was gonna go into fashion or, um, design, um, later in life. So I guess I kinda, kinda, um, made that happen. But I, so I started my own, um, consulting firm, um, back when I moved to Minnesota. And so I was going back and forth from here to Seattle, full intention to move, um, to LA or New York. Um, and then, and then the pandemic happened, surprise! Um, so, um, during that time, because my job is very technical, technically focused. Um, and also it's like, I'm helping executives sleep at night, so I'm up all night. Um, and so it was just very, it was very intensive. And my mom was like, well, you know, you like writing and you like plants. Like you should do something that you enjoy. And so at that point I had moved back to Minneapolis and I just started a blog writing about, you know, moving back to Minneapolis, how I was styling my home with plants. Um, and of course during the pandemic, everyone got into plants. Um, and this was all on Instagram. And, um, before I knew it, there was an HGTV producer, um, who had said Shayla in Minneapolis is an interior plant stylist. And I'm like, what is an interior plant stylist? I'm like, hey, you can call me the janitor if you want to pay me. And so that just opened up a new, whole new avenue where I started, you know, doing media segments and, and writing and I, really everything that I had wanted to do, like, you know, everything teenage Shayla wanted to do as far as being creative and, and expressive. Um, it was able, it was a nice medium. So it became the, it went from being the, the nights and weekends to, um, flip-flopping to, to be the thing by day.
Are you a plant influencer? I didn't realize that.
Look up the plant penthouse.
Okay, I didn't realize I was talking to a plant influencer.
Isn't that so funny? I know, I'm like, who, and so that's like the first thing, like my little cousins, they're like, are we famous? I'm like, I don't, I'm like, listen guys, I don't, I don't think it's that deep. But people do know me as the plant lady. So, um, that's, I guess the plant lady has dipped her toe in politics at this point.
So I would have stuck with the plants just for my own mental health. But you, you have decided you want to get into school politics for some reason.
For some, for some reason, that's why I was like, this is a, a soul calling. Because again, was not on my bingo card, but I am, I was someone, I was very excited about school when I was five. Um, and, and like my parent education, my, I'm, I'm Nigerian, so it's like, education is what brought my dad from Nigeria. Um, education is what, um, also helped my mom come out of poverty. Everything around education has been an open door. And so that's really what I'm passionate about is making sure that every child is aware of the, the incredible opportunity they have by receiving an education. So anything that I can do to facilitate that excitement and confidence, um, I mean, the, the door is also, it's open for me or just incredible. And so I just, I want everyone to have that opportunity regardless of background, circumstance, um, anything that they, um, it's an equal playing field. So that's really, it's like, I'm a fight for the underdog type of person. And so that's, that is the only reason that I put myself through this.
Okay, la- last question. Do you have anything to recommend? What are you enjoying? Do you have a hobby or a piece of entertainment? Uh, like when you've had a long and stressful day, what do you, what do you do to, uh, relax and unwind? Uh, what can you recommend to listeners?
Ooh, so I, um, I, so right, I love making, I love making floral arrangements. That's like my, like peaceful activity. Um, I thoroughly enjoy that. Hey, I say get out in nature. I know it's a little chilly, right? It's getting a little chillier, but, um, going for a walk, uh, can put a lot in perspective. Um, and so I feel like if anything, that's what I've been, um, learning in the past two years, is simplifying my idea of enjoyment. I used to think like I needed to take a trip or I needed to, you know, go on vacation or do something to like find joy and be happy. And now I realize like, being able to, to see the sunrise another day, uh, being able to have a conversation with my family, um, being able to, and just get outside and use my two legs, uh, those are things that, uh, really bring me joy right now.
Do you find, so you mentioned walking and I agree very much with your recommendation. Not that you need my approval, but like, do you find that it helps with creativity? Cause you're, you sound like a creative person. That's what you, that's part of what you do for a living. And so do you find that taking a walk helps you open up your mind and, uh, help you be more creative?
Yes, it definitely does. It helps me, um, I'm the type of person, I wake up with like 30 different ideas. And that's like, I call my sister, I'm like, eh, I just have this, I just had an idea. And I'm like, do you get this many ideas? She's like, no, no, I don't. So it really like going for a walk helps me, um, compartmentalize things in my mind and simplify, um, and, and realign. So that's what I, I love, uh, getting out into nature. I'm actually a master gardener, um, volunteer. Um, and so that's like during the summer, we do children's gardening residency. Cause I like, there's kids who've never touched dirt before. And I'm like, touch the dirt, it'll change your life. So, yes.
So, so you know all about growing food, right?
Uh, to a certain extent, to a certain extent, yeah. I love, I, so I live in a condo, so I have container gardens. But, um, yes, through being in the master gardener program, you know, from like cucumbers to like turning them into pickles, um, the whole lot.
Okay, well, so much more we could talk about, but we're gonna cut it short. Cause who has time to listen to four episodes of School Board Candidates? If we don't limit it at some point. Uh, Shayla Owaduni is running for, uh, school board, Minneapolis School Board at large. Everyone can vote in that race, uh, across the city. Uh, the election is November 5th. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. This was a joy.
Uh, this has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, uh, thank you for listening.